Not in my area. Nice hat.
Good afternoon and welcome to our last meeting in July. We appreciate those folks who are watching us on electricity television and those of us in our council chambers. The invocation tonight will be given by Councilman Rick Lockridge in respect of that. Flag will be led by Councilman Matt Arden. Please rise.
Let us pray. I do have the Father, we come to you first of all, thank you for all the good things you provide. We thank you for this city that we live in. We thank you for all the people that work in this city to make the lives of our community better. We thank you for everything you provide, even when we don't ask for it. Now, we ask you, Lord, tonight, to give us the wisdom and the courage to always make the decisions that are good for you. We ask you to guide us and direct us in all the right paths and keep each member of our council safe. We also ask you to take good care of our patrolmen, our firemen, our folks that are away in war. We ask you to take good care of all the people that take good care of us. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the body of our meeting, we have the election of Mayor Pro Tem. And I will firm this, McConnell, for recap.
As your, as our city code says, the Mayor Pro Tem is for one year service at a time. That term begins with our fiscal year and our code specifically provides for a rotation, a process that is available based upon your years of service. And in this particular case, this year, the Mayor Pro Tem, the person who has served the longest period of time on the council and is willing to serve as Mayor Pro Tem is Dr. V. Thompson. Dr. Thompson is willing to serve in this capacity and she can serve in the absence of the mayor and represent the city and the council at any of the events or functions or speaking engagements and other duties that are attached to that office. So, based upon your requirements in the code and Dr. Thompson's willingness to serve, we certainly recommend that she serve in the capacity and you elect her to be your next Mayor Pro Tem for the 2018-2019 year.
Thank you. Comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we elect Dr. Thompson to be our Mayor Pro Tem for the coming fiscal year.
First by Mr. Stewart, the second by Mr. Lockridge. Any further discussion?
Couldn't think of a better one.
I agree. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Congratulations, Dr. Thompson. Words?
Thank all of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, as I would like to thank John for his service for the last year and going a little bit beyond this year and serving as our Mayor Pro Tem. You did a good job representing the city. So, John, thank you.
Lots of good help. Thank you, guys. Andy, y'all.
Great, thanks. The minutes of our July 13 meeting were distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
Some would.
So, first by the Mayor Pro Tem, second by Mr. Robbins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? The minutes of July 13 pass unanimously. I'm sorry, you're right, Ms. Stewart.
Ninth and the thirteenth.
Ninth and the thirteenth. Stand corrected. Let the minutes reflect that the motion passed for both of you. Yes. We have one item of old business and that item is request consideration of an ordinance to annex and zone to R-15 single-family residential, 1704 South Murray Avenue Extension. Ms. McConnell?
I think we've started a new trend on the southern end of our city.
Looks like.
In April, you all heard request and annexed two pieces of property, 1706 and 1709, South Murray Avenue Extension, and that has now spread to the request for 1704, asking to consider being annexed and zoned. This did go before the Planning Commission on July the 10th and received unanimously the recommended approval of that. It will be zoned R-5, which is consistent with the other properties. So, we would recommend that you have first reading of this annexation for 1704 South Murray Avenue Extension.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, Dr. Thompson?
I think my area is growing.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're putting you persons into District C5. I move that we accept it.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It passes unanimously on the first reading. We'll jump directly to new business and our first item of new business is request consideration of a referral to the Planning Commission, a petition to rezone 1805 through 1811 and 1806 through 1808, Edgewood Avenue from R-5 Single Family Residential to RM18 Multi-Family Residential. Ms. McConnell?
As you can see on your map, this is, these are properties that are existing on Edgewood Avenue as multi-family in use. They were built this way a number of years ago and at the time, they were, with our zoning ordinance, they were conforming then at having a, either an RM1 or RM2 zoning designation at the time. These represent 20 multi-family units that are in existence and it's our understanding from the applicant that the reason for the request is a potential change in ownership of the property and in order to obtain the financing, it is necessary for the properties to be zoned in a conforming status, not a non-conforming status, hence the request coming before you. As you know, this is the beginning, a referral to the Planning Commission is the beginning of a rezoning process. So, that meeting before the Planning Commission would be on August the 7th.
Good. Questions, comments?
It's in my ward. I think it's probably a good thing to have this done and I've moved that we refer this to the Planning Commission.
Well, first by Mr. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It passes unanimously to the Planning Commission. Second item of new business is request consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82 of the Anderson City Code. Ms. McConnell?
This sounds complicated. It actually is not. We have a section in our city code that deals with the operation of vehicles on our city streets. Also, the state code has a section in the state code, Section 56-5-10, and it's titled "The Uniform Act Regulating Traffic on Highways." As you all know, a lot of times you have regulations that deal with municipalities that are referenced in the state code and then we also may have our own set of ordinances that regulate that too. This, what is proposed before you tonight repeals Article 3 in our city code and, which it already references the state code anyway. So, all we're saying is we're taking our language out and that the prevailing state code will apply, which we already use it. We're just trying to be consistent as we have with other laws to make sure that we're not in conflict because the state law would prevail. So, this is everything from telling what a traffic citation for failure to yield the right of way, you know, itemizes all of those different traffic code violations. And what we have found is that certainly with our adoption of or implementation of the electronic ticketing, certainly our being consistent with state law is important. It also means in some cases, our pursuit of grants through the state, like traffic enforcement grants, they look for your specific conformance with the state law so that you're not in conflict. Therefore, we are recommending the repeal of Article 3 and therefore our reliance on the state code, which is already referenced in our code, that would be the prevailing regulations. The chief is here and Kim Pooleen is here from our court system if you have any specific questions, but your city attorney, this comes as a recommendation from your city attorney, your police chief and your court administrator.
Great. Question, Ms. Stewart?
These laws, I guess, that the traffic laws, I know you mentioned like speeding, it tells you, I guess, and again, I don't know what all these ordinance say, but does it have anything to do with like if you're chasing somebody, when to back off or is that, you know, or is that more in your police proceedings? And, you know, what all does these laws really get into to deal with? Noise ordinance as far as if, you know, somebody bumping their radio real loud and you've got traffic laws for that as well? Does that get into this as well or?
These are more antiquated laws, which you've heard, we've used for years. Very first one is manner of driving. It covers kind of everything under the sun. You know, it's, we've had grants, like Ms. McConnell said, they specifically want us writing speeding ticket fair to yield the right of way, following too closely to that nature. There's also ordinances in this Article 3 such as utilizing a parking lot for a through trafficway, which really was for cruising years ago. It's just a lot of older statutes that's all covered by the South Carolina Code now. All of our codes like the noise ordinance, we're talking about this still, that's separate. It wouldn't be in with this group.
And you're saying you're doing away with like the manner of driving? Because I thought we did that locally here to kind of help keep some of the revenue here instead of all the fines going to the state.
And, Kim, I want to speak to that more, but I will tell you that we're still sending in that percentage, the same as a speeding ticket, even though it is a city ordinance. Since it's a moving violation, we handle that just like any regular ticket.
But wouldn't we keep all of the manner of driving here? We, I thought that's what we did, we kept that here in house and wouldn't have to send that to the state, you know, because if, you know, if it ain't a real bad ticket, I thought that's what we were doing.
Basically, what the state would do, if we had a ticket that circumvented a state law, they would come in and do an audit of us and we have been complying that for some time now, even though we write the manner of driving, it still is treated just like a speeding ticket or whatever. The problem is, and to share with you the reason it's much better for our citizens, because if we wrote a two-point ticket for speeding versus a manner of driving ticket when it goes to your insurance company, the insurance, they can post whatever points they want to that.
But there's no points assessed from ours to the state for that manner of driving.
Right. So, the state wouldn't do that, the insurance company would.
Kim, you got something else you want to come in?
With the adoption, when we go to CMS, when we put in a moving violation, it automatically takes the assessments and gives it to the state. We don't have a choice in that.
So, our money's going to go to the state as required regardless now when the ticket is entered into the system. So, they, the system determines what the fine is and what that assessment is and what our percentage is that goes to the state as well.
Just for general knowledge, just for the folks that are watching, what percentage do we send to the state and what is that useful? I know, but I'd like for somebody else.
Hey, Kim, come down to the mic so everybody can hear you.
This only happens in government. They get 107.5%. What it means is on a $81 ticket, which is the lowest speeding ticket, the city keeps about $25.
The city keeps $25 and then the rest?
No, we keep 25.
We keep 25, the rest goes to the state?
Yes, sir. And it goes to spinal cord injuries, victims fund. There's two pages of people.
And the state law enforcement training classes. They use that money as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, when people say, you know, we have a speed trap, that's ridiculous simply because we're not getting that much money out of it in the first place. All right, Chief?
Sure. I was thinking about the drivers and I'm pretty ignorant about some of the laws that our chief give me a ticket for. So, I know it's up to the driver to be aware of everything that goes along with being a driver. Back to that, some of the best things that we do and we're breaking the law, we don't even know about. Is that true?
Yes, ma'am. And that's the reason we have so many accidents in the city.
Because we don't know it, we're breaking the law.
People don't follow them.
And that is the true purpose of us issuing uniform summonings, is to educate the public.
Yeah, I can see that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chair?
Just for clarification, does this ordinance change help our bottom line revenue? Because I know that the last several years on budget, it's down considerably. I mean, does it affect that at all?
No.
No, I don't think so.
It is just a section code. It will just mean that we're all uniform with the state codes now.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Should, because we don't want to pull somebody in just to make money off.
No, I'm just asking if it affects the bottom line, that's all it was.
It does not.
Negative or positively, I just.
Anything else, guys? Mr. Harbin?
Well, that, Mayor, I'd like my motion to approve this change.
Second.
Request ordinance change.
First by Mr. Harbin, second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. The third item of new business is request consideration of a contract for revenue collections consulting services. Ms. McConnell?
As you all know, our cities are hubs for economic growth and development and it's certainly important that our business activities that are conducted here operate on a level playing field. That's important for economic competitiveness and it's important certainly for the health of our city's growth as well. Margot is going to tell you a little bit about this agreement that we have before you. The most important thing being that we did put out a request for qualifications and what that means in terms of the contract that we are proposing to enter this evening.
Okay. So, we put out a request in May for soliciting proposals from consulting firms to examine and analyze business activity within the city's corporate limits that may necessitate a city business license and/or other local business taxes or fees. And our objective was to identify non-compliant businesses. We had three responses and we evaluated them based on experience with past projects of comparable size, professional personnel, adequate staffing levels, ability to meet time and quality requirements, their current project loads and projected workloads, location of their office, and then of course, the cost fee and reasonableness. We also verified references with our peer cities Florence, Spartanburg and Myrtle Beach, who all use the company that we're proposing. We currently have about 3,600 active business licenses on record and what we're trying to do is increase compliance among businesses engaging in local commerce and create an equitable sharing of the license tax and revenue responsibility. The consulting company reviews revenue sources utilizing a data-driven digital approach to research and to identify non-compliant commercial activity that would facilitate compliance with the business license. Any vendors they find would remit the money directly to the city, therefore putting it on the city's radar and we would pay a commission. There's some confusion here. When I say year one only, we're entering in a three-year contract. If ABC Company is found to be non-compliant and they have to remit money to us, we would pay a 38% commission fee this year. Next year, ABC Company has to pay us and I don't pay a fee to the consultant. It's just new business they generate and it's just a three-year agreement for the new business. It's only a fee on the first year of collections for that company. But next year, it's XYZ Company, then yes, I would pay 38% on XYZ, so I don't have to pay year after year. One vendor did want to charge us two years of a fee for the same new vendor and so Southern Resources, we eliminated them from consideration because they were the only vendor charging us or requesting to charge us commission for two years in a row on the same vendor. So, based on the recommendations and the references that we had, we recommend awarding the three-year contract. And I cannot pronounce this company very correctly, New Strat Analytics for Revenue Collection Consulting Service Contract for the City of Anderson. And again, if they don't collect anything, then we don't pay anything.
What do you anticipate?
Well, based on the other cities that we talked with that use this company, Spartanburg got 750,000 in their first year. Myrtle Beach got 597,000 in their first year and Florence got 586,000 their first year.
And I imagine it's a lot cheaper than hiring an employee to chase that too.
Well, now, we do have an employee that goes out into the field, construction, landscaping, businesses that truly physically come in the city but may not have a license. Last year, our employee did 2,300 checks, found 730 violations and he collected $93,000 from his checks. But what we're talking about are vendors who maybe physically don't come into the city, but their product comes into the city.
Not visible, yep.
Not visible.
I'll open it up, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chair?
I asked several questions before council meeting, so Ms. McConnell answered the majority of them, but the one thing I, so this only applies to new business? New businesses that they find within our city limits that are doing business without a business license?
Yes. Like if you're already on our active business license rolls, then it would not apply to you. If some business is out there that we don't know about and this New Strat Analytics identifies them through their data sources and verifies that they are in fact conducting business here, then based upon what their business is and what their, what their product, their sales are here, their business license would be based upon that scale just like everybody else's. But we would only pay that vendor a commission, New Strat Analytics, we would only pay them that finder's fee in essence for that first year.
And how does this apply to e-commerce businesses? If somebody like is, has a home-based business and their, their home is within the City of Anderson, but they do $100,000 or $50,000 worth of e-commerce type stuff?
If they're a business that's identified by our rate classes, then they would be, they would be accountable for a business license fee. So, we would use that specified NACs codes and rate classes in order to determine if, and our vendor understands those rules in our ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of that, is there a limit of how much somebody has to make within the city before this kind of thing is brought to them?
Depends upon your classification, what your business is, but you know, typically, typically someone's first year in operation, I mean, it's based upon your gross revenue or your gross receipts. So, each business may be different depending upon what category of classification your business is. But is there like a $50 fee?
No, I don't mean that. Is it, do you have to make it $10,000 for this would go into effect or what?
Not really. It's just different, different categories of business have a different minimum classification and then so much per thousand or whatever after that.
So, in other words, everybody has a business license. If you do business in the city, you've got to have a business license.
I got you. I have a question. Are these businesses required to open their books to an auditor of some sort?
Our business license ordinance does specify that we can audit, yes.
But otherwise, it's honor system?
Well, it's a honor system, yes.
To a point.
To a point. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to start identifying businesses. It used to be, we could go out and you're doing construction and we could make sure the plumber and the electrician and whoever else is working on the house has a license because they're physically there and we can physically check. And we still do that. But we're getting more into more of a business environment where people now can do business without physically coming into the city, that their product or their services are coming into the city. So, they're not paying the license and I'm not sure what data analytics this company uses and I guess that's why they can collect the finder's fee. But that's what they do.
They're data mining, I mean.
Yes.
I guess I was just talking to Joe, I guess, I guess for Nellie who's in construction, I guess like if they order cabinets from somewhere out of the state and then they bring those cabinets in here, then that company that sent those cabinets in got to pay a business license because their products coming into the city.
Perhaps, yes.
Can I get to ask for an example, maybe?
Come on.
I'm thinking about.
Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
I was thinking about someone who might be in the city and they're maybe keeping children, you know, they don't really have a license to do that. It happens all the time. And there's someone who's keeping five or six kids. How are you going to know and how are you going to determine that they need a, do they need a personal, do they need a business license?
Yes. They would need a business license and depending upon how many children they're keeping, there may be DHEC requirements that they would have to meet as well.
Exactly.
So, that's probably, that might not be the best example in this instance, Dr. Thompson, but the, as I think the mayor used the phrase, data mining. This is a company and other companies like them who use some type of, who have access to some type of information that, where they understand the type of businesses in a community like Anderson that are likely doing business here and they have some source that may identify who those, who those businesses or those types of activities are. Now, we don't have access to that, so we don't really know what their proprietary data collection or data system of gaining that information is. But judging by our peer cities, we can tell you that there are dollars out there on the table that are due to the City of Anderson by these businesses who are conducting their business here and it seems as though we're missing out on an opportunity to keep the competitive nature of the economy level playing field so that if I have to pay a business license, then Margot has to pay one too.
Good point. Any other questions? Or Margot, go ahead.
I was just going to, so besides the peer cities that we had looked at, Dr. Thompson, City of Rock Hill does it, Town of Somerville does it, City of Newberry, City of Fountain Inn, City of Mullins, City, I mean, this is just where people are starting to go to help make sure everybody's on the same, as Linda said, on the same playing field.
Ms. Harbin?
The, Margot, the numbers that you used from the peer cities, those were how much they found, is that actually how much they collected?
That's how much they found and collected the first year.
Found and collected.
Because sometimes if I'm buying a copy or I'm not going to buy one every year. So, ABC Company may pay me that year we find them, but they may not sell another copy here in the city for two more years. But now I'm aware of them because they've paid me directly and now we know to go after them every year and check.
Okay, I got you.
So, that, but yes, they collected Spartanburg 750,000 in their first year, Myrtle Beach 597,000 in their first year.
So, they may have actually found more revenue, but just not collected that much.
Right, these are the collected numbers. Now, we were surprised they were giving them, but I guess they were so pleased with this company, they were willing to. they were willing to share their dollars with us.
Is...
Ms. Love.
Is this new, is this something new that we're going into now?
I've been to...
Have we ever done this before?
We have, well, we've not sought a, a, a vendor through this process until we've learned how lucrative it could be and, and again, provide that competitive advantage. So our, we have found from some of our other cities that they've been doing this for, for several years, and it proved to be fruitful.
Hmm, okay.
But I think even on your end, Rick, is e-commerce, is the way we do business?
Yep.
To somebody's point about Amazon and how do you, the brick and mortar and, and some of the things that were happening on the federal level in regards to, you know, Amazon-type companies. But, you know, I, I just think that twenty years ago, when you think about people that do business.
No, no.
I mean, it's...
So, so this is solely to, to increase revenue? It's not to lower or lower the fees of other businesses that have been paying for years to go after the businesses that haven't been paying?
That's correct. It does not affect your structure of your business license, your fee structure. It only, um, levels things out and makes, makes it fair and equitable among all businesses who are conducting business in our city. Helps to identify those who should be paying and aren't.
Go ahead, Tom.
Just curious, um, like for our nonprofit sector, whether it's the hospital system or whoever it may be, like, I know, I guess they don't pay business license in the city, but people who do work within there, do we keep track of, like, food service providers? If they come put new office furniture, do we keep track? Are those going to be people who've got to pay business license, or they're already doing that now?
Uh, this company would identify anybody regardless of who they're doing work for. If they're on their radar, uh, whether it's e-commerce or whether it's food service or whether it's, um, furniture or whatever, whatever that is, if this company identifies, they're probably, it's probably easy for them to identify by, um, type of business, by classification. They're probably going after business industry sectors would be our guess. Um, so if any of those come up on their radar, they would...
Just nonprofit sector, they don't pay business license, is that correct?
Well, yeah.
People they do business with do.
So last...
But, but things like, you know, there's a sales tax on furniture. So, I mean, a company can, can sell anybody furniture and not need a business license to sell furniture or paper or whatever, so, you know.
I guess my last one, just to, to, uh, add on to Tony's point is that if there's a, if there's a nonprofit, obviously they do not pay. But if they have, just to say, for example, they have a, uh, a healthcare facility has a, a linen service that they contract out, that contractor would then have to pay a business license.
Correct.
And that's way, that would be ways of identifying some of those revenues.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve this for our businesses that are already invested in our city to level the playing field, uh, make it fair for what they're competing against outside the city. And I appreciate our city businesses, and if we can level that playing field up, I'd make a motion to approve this.
Okay.
First, by Ms. Hoben.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Any further discussion?
Uh, Margot, I wouldn't mind if maybe six months from now, put in a call, just report back to us, say, hey, here's what we've done.
Okay.
This is what this company's done for the last six months.
No problem.
Well, one last question.
Yes, sir.
When did I start this service?
Um, we'll contact them tomorrow.
Okay, so it's immediately?
Right.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, side?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this unanimously, thank you. The last item, a new business that requests consideration of an agreement among the City of Anderson, Anderson County, Innovate Anderson regarding the CVB and County Square Development. Ms. McColl?
Um, this may seem a little complicated. I'll, I'll try to make it not complicated.
Okay.
Um, this is an agreement among three, three different players, the City of Anderson, Anderson County, and Innovate Anderson. And there are really three parts of this agreement that are specific to the city. Now, as you all know, the city is a member of Innovate Anderson, which is a public-private partnership. And in the, our current, our, our Convention and Visitors Bureau was essentially birthed or established under the umbrella of Innovate Anderson. Uh, and that was around two thousand four, two thousand five. Um, it has always been the goal of Innovate Anderson to, to... Once the CVB was established and up and running, it was an organization that could be a standalone entity. So it didn't have to exist under the umbrella of Innovate Anderson. So that was a goal. Um, and so fairly recently, part of that transition began. The, um, the CVB is now known as the Anderson County Convention and Visitors Bureau. To the, um, outside observer, to our visitor, to our citizens, even to us, it looks just the same as it did under the Innovate's umbrella, and it's operating the same. There are essentially two funders of the, two funding, two primary funding partners of this CVB, and that is the City of Anderson and Anderson County. And those dollars come from our accommodations tax fund, where, um, thirty percent of our collections are required by law to go to the designated tourism entity. And our designated tourism entity is the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Now, so the transition from under the umbrella of Innovate Anderson had made that transition for it to be a standalone entity. And our goal as the city is to continue to have a place to lodge our accommodation tax funds. And we would transition those from the old CVB under Innovate Anderson to the new standalone CVB. So part of the agreement specifies that we will continue to fund, as we have in the past, this new standalone CVB. In addition to that, the CVB has a Board of Directors. And that Board of Directors is very similar to your, um, Accommodations Tax Committee. It's made up by individuals who represent various sectors of the hospitality community. In this instance, we would, um, have Bobby Bevel as our Parks and Rec Director to serve in an ex officio capacity on that board. And then later on this year, or as vacancies arise on that board, um, we would appoint, we, the city, would appoint two members from the hospitality industry to serve on that board. So again, the city would have a voice, um, sitting on that board. Um, the other piece, the third piece of this agreement is, has to do with the County Square Development, the former Vales Building site. And as you all know, we have, um, for the last, since like nineteen ninety-eight, we've been doing, um, streetscape projects throughout our city and other types of infrastructure that are public infrastructure oriented. It has always been our desire to see the rest of the streetscape that's in the vicinity of the Vales Building and the, um, Historic Courthouse, to really finish the streetscape in that area. But we've also known that that is a, um, an area that has been, um, a lot, a lot of redevelopment has been occurring over time, even with our own Red Park, um, and now certainly with the County Square Development Site. Um, you might remember in our budget process, looking at our five-year CIP and our five-year model, uh, we identified, um, the streetscape in that area as being a project on our list to do. So this does not commit us to a certain amount of dollars. I think it's certainly an, an indication, the agreement simply says that we are supportive and would participate in the public infrastructure development of the public spaces and the public infrastructure associated with the County Square Development Project. So the other part of the agreement pertains more to Innovate Anderson by saying that Innovate will, um, take the balance of the CVB money in the bank account and transfer that to the standalone CVB. And in addition to that, the Anderson County, um, will deed to, um, Innovate Anderson, the land that is in the Advanced Materials Center, which the current, uh, which has been done previously as it related to any sale of that property. But again, that is between Innovate Anderson and Anderson County. So we would, um, this is being recommended by Innovate Anderson. It's being recommended by Anderson County. And we certainly, as your staff, recommend entering into this agreement on behalf of the city. I hope I have explained that.
I think you've heard of that, but I have, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
I'll say, you go ahead, Ms. Love.
Does Innovate Anderson go away?
No, sir. Innovate Anderson does not go away. In fact, it, um, the, on their radar for this year is really, um, re-establishing, um, direction for Innovate Anderson because, as we're saying, since, since the CVB would no longer be under that umbrella, it gives Innovate Anderson an opportunity to really redirect their energies and establish their mission and goals going forward a little more clearly.
How do they get funded?
Um, well, it's public-private. So in the, in the past, it has, it has had funding from the City of Anderson, from Anderson County, from, uh, utility companies, from banks, from contractors, um, from a whole variety...
Hospital?
Hospital, um, a whole variety of, um...
So basically, it'd be privately funded versus the CB, CVB?
Well, the CVB was just one component, uh, under the umbrella of that. So, and its funding, the funding that went to the CVB was completely separate. The City of Anderson has provided fifty thousand dollars in funding to the CVB since its inception. Um, the county has roughly provided about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But again, that, that number that funds the CVB will fluctuate based upon your actual accommodations tax collections.
Got you, sure.
Mr. Mayor.
I think, uh, have Mr. Chapman, but Ms. Stewart asked a question. I think it's a good question. Keep in mind that CVB, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, got on the CVB and Visit Anderson, which is more of the, I would say, the modern way of tagging CVB dollars.
That's correct.
I think it's Visit Greenville, Visit Florence, um, but they're all the same thing. So, take Ms. Chapman then.
So my question has to do with something about funding. So the funding, the funding that we provide as the City of Anderson, which will go to which organization?
It will...
Go ahead.
Go ahead. It will go to, uh, what is officially known as the Anderson County Convention and Visitors Bureau, but is also as its more user-friendly name, Visit Anderson, it would go, it will go there.
So it'll be divided into those, or just go through then?
It's one, one entity. There will only be one Visitors, Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Okay, so we will, we will no longer provide money towards the Innovate Anderson?
It won't exist under, it, it won't exist anymore, yes.
Wait a second, well, he said...
Under, under Innovate, that won't exist anymore.
But we still will provide money to Innovate Anderson.
So we're going to provide, we're going to provide money to, to both organizations? Right?
In essence, the Innovate Anderson and the CVB of Visiting.
We will still fund Innovate Anderson, and we will still fund the CVB.
Through the accommodation...
But it's different money, different pots of money.
Okay.
So your funding, uh, funding the CVB is specifically out of, um, the accommodations tax collections.
Okay.
And part of that money is also done for the other projects, the accommodation tax projects.
To the people who submit applications.
Applications and so...
So thirty, thirty percent of it goes to the CVB by law. And sixty-five percent goes to those that you, the applications that you review every year for different events.
Seniorvoltes, bellies, tennis.
Right. Um, and, uh, out of those collections, just a reminder, the first twenty-five thousand off the top comes to the City of Anderson along with an additional five percent. And then you take the thirty percent out and the sixty-five percent out, so. Our accommodations tax collections have grown over the years, and we continue to do things to, um, see that they continue to grow.
Jeff, do you have a question?
Beds and beds tax.
I had to read this, uh, three times, I understand it, even called, Ms. McColl, but I think I've got a grasp on it.
All right.
There's my, uh...
Ms. Stewart? On number six of this agreement that we have in front of us that says that the city will participate, participate in the development of public spaces and our public infrastructure associated with the County Development Square Project, former building site. At what level are we going to participate? And will it come back to us to let us know what those dollars that we're contributing? Or is that just going to be at their discretion?
No, this is at your discretion. It simply says, like we said, we, we want to continue to do streetscape projects and public improvement projects. But, and we plan to do a certain amount at most every year in your, in your downtown. That's something we've done since we started that back in the nineties. But to the degree how much you, you contribute and at what point we know what it is, that, what the project actually is, that will all come back to you.
But the other point is, is that the, the, the infrastructure project of their building, we have no control over that, nor are we funding any money to them.
Other than VAR?
But in terms of being supportive, you know, I think one of the things that this is specifically saying is that, that we're supportive of that, we're supportive of that County Square Development. And to that extent, we do want to participate in how that public space and the public infrastructure is part of Anderson.
Because that changes...
It's good for us.
Our city. I mean, it's, uh, you know, they want it to be a multi-use. It could be office space, retail, residential, restaurants, sorts of...
There are no losers in this. This is all, everybody wins with this agreement.
Any other questions?
Make a motion, we accept it as presented. So...
First by Ms. Chapman, second by Mr. Jeff Roberts. All those in favor, side?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this unanimously. Administrative briefing, Ms. McColl?
Well, we're almost at the end of July. Um, on Thursday, we have the Concerned Citizens of the East Side meeting at five P.M. And that same night, we have the Anderson University Overlay District Public Meeting. We have, um, this is the second of two meetings. We had the first one two weeks ago. This is at six P.M. at the A.R.P. Church on the Boulevard. Um, we would anticipate after that meeting, the staff will take all of the input and begin to formulate something in, in a cohesive, um, document that, that you all and the public will have ample opportunity to look at again. Um, I would say that the first meeting was, um, I would expect this, this meeting Thursday night to essentially be a repeat of the first meeting. So if there's anyone who didn't, um, make it to the first meeting, this would be a good opportunity to learn about what an overlay district is, what it potentially can do, and the types of things that might be included in it based upon, um, input from all of those in the area. Um, and then in, uh, the beginning of August, uh, August the seventh, we have the ABC, um, Community Group meeting at five-thirty at Taylor Memorial. And, uh, um, back on track after summer hiatus is the Anderson County Municipal Association meeting at seven P.M. in Pelzer and West Pelzer.
Correction, on, on the twenty-first?
Uh, yes, sir.
We're not going to have a meeting that night.
Don't worry, I was coming. Did you have a good... Did you have a good meeting on the seventeenth?
Nice catch, thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Also, I'd like to make a couple of corrections on the council calendar for August. Uh, the, on the eleventh of August, the Southeast Anderson Community Task Force will have their fourteenth annual back-to-school bash in the Greeley Park. We give away a hundred and fifty book bags filled full of school supplies for the children, usually about three or four hundred people there in the park every year. Then, on the sixteenth, because we're having that on the eleventh, there is no meeting on the sixteenth, so you can take that off your calendar.
Mr. Stewart?
It's from two to six P. M.
Did we have a movie Friday night? Did it rain?
You know, I don't know. I think we, I think we did have it.
All right. No other business, I entertain the motion to adjourn. First, by Mr. Newton.
Second.
Nobody else wants to... Second, by Mr. Roberts.
Fix him, we can't, people wanna stay here, Mayor.
All those in favor, sir? Posed? We stand adjourned.